One of Tim Dunn's bills from Yuma, House Bill 2389. That has passed committee in the Senate, that has passed the Rules Committee in the Senate. It goes to the full Senate now. Everybody was scared because this week the House has introduced what they call a skinny budget, and if that were to pass, obviously, all of the progress on those bill, on that bill, would be lost. Working with High Ground, which is the county's lobbyist, and our water team, I can't say enough about the water team on Priority Four with Mayor Sheehy and Jamie Kelly, Mark Clark, all three of our legislators, you know, our two House Representatives, our Senator. We've all been very close and in lockstep on this, and because of the way that the legislature is, has a very, you know, narrow majority for Republicans this year, our three representatives have been able to leverage their vote to say, hey, we're not going to pass these other things that may be a priority to Central Arizona if we don't get some progress on these other, you know, Priority Four and RMA. So, we'll have to see what happens in the future with that legislation, but we're still alive, and in this far into the legislative session, it's, we're the farthest we've ever gotten on this issue. So, on the rural management groundwater basin stuff, we think we're still alive there, too. Everybody thinks that there's going to be a special session on water, as everybody knows, the governor has introduced new legislation, a new organization that he's calling the Arizona Water Authority, the way it was introduced. It was pretty clear that he had not reached out to anybody in rural Arizona, because there wasn't really anything in rural Arizona, for rural Arizona in that package is introduced. But in conversations with our legislators, I think Gil Griffin, who is the Chair of the House Natural Resources, Energy, Water, in the House, understands and recognizes that she's going to have to address the RMA component this year. And I think that the Governor's Office, through conversations with our legislators, thinks that the RMA legislation is a win for the Governor's Office this year. So, we're hopeful to see some progress there. But, you know, I really can't say enough for the dedication and the work of our three elected representatives down at the state. If you see them, I would just say, give them a thanks for their advocacy on our water, and we'll just continue the fight. You know, if you saw yesterday, the town of Queen Creek, through the Arizona Commerce Authority, had the audacity to introduce and announce that they're getting a big new battery plant. But, as we all know, they don't have the water to support that battery plant, they're going to be coming for Priority Four water, clearly. So, we have to keep circling the wagons and staying close. So, that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Supervisor, just want to, on behalf of the mayor and council, thank you for your vote on Monday, supporting the sheriff and patrolling Davis Camp, and supporting Davis Camp. You know, the investments that you're making with ARPA into Davis Camp, and certainly supporting water safety is a huge step in the right direction, and, you know, the, sort of that relationship between the city and the county grows stronger every day, and we appreciate your support.
Absolutely, and my hat's off to Supervisor Angus and her investments with her one-fifth share of the county's ARPA funds, she's done a really good job with investing in there. Obviously, I think that that stretch of waterway is one of the most dangerous in the state. I don't live down there, but when I go down there, I certainly see a lot of people on those personal watercrafts, so we have to make sure that we do whatever we can, both county and city, to make sure that it's a safe place. Thank you.
Mayor, if you don't mind.
Mayor Brady.
Jen.
Jen, go ahead.
Thank you. Supervisor, I've been contacted about a meeting regarding the launch at Lake Mead on the Mojave County side, and I've connected some people with the Senator's Office. I think there's a meeting today, perhaps with the National Park Department. Anyway, trying to get efforts to have some kind of measure, even temporary, so that, especially in Kingman, the people who utilize Lake Mead can still have access for fishing, et cetera. Apparently, it's a pretty large industry. Could you enlighten us a little bit on the county's position?
Yeah, I'll do my best. Thank you, Mayor Miles. I know that they've had issues with just the fact that the water level just keeps dropping, you know, I mean, they, I know the county was, through District Four Office, Supervisor Bishop's office, had had numerous conversations last year with the Park Service, trying to keep access to the lake. I mean, I remember, those of us have been here for a long, long time, can remember going up to Meadview, and it was just a great time, you know, it was easy to launch. It's not quite so easy to launch there anymore. But, I can assure you that I'll take that message back to County Manager Sam Elters, and also I'll communicate that to Gene Bishop, the District Four Supervisor. We'll make sure that we, make sure that the county is at the table in most conversations.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because apparently, the National Park Service has said they're going to improve or keep the Nevada side, you know, accessible, but there isn't that commitment to Mojave, so your efforts would be greatly appreciated, and that of Mr. Elters or Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you, Mayor Miles.
Ron, you had something?
Yeah, I just, Travis, thank you so much for the water effort, but also, we have an announcement, maybe you'd want to share that with regards to broadband and the work that you've done from the county side.
Yeah.
It really, I mean, we're going, we're happy about the groundbreaking announcement, but it really through your efforts, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Manager Fogg, and, you know, on the RMA component as well, I forgot to mention, and I want to thank the City of Kingman for their close partnership with District One. We had ABC-15 News come up, Courtney Holmes, one of the reporters, and I think they did close to a four-minute segment on our groundwater basin issue, and I thought that turned out really well. I mean, they met with you and your staff, I thought it presented really, really well. So, we'll continue those efforts. So, as we mentioned before, ARPA funds, the county received ARPA funds, we decided to vote and divide those, kind of like we do CDBG funds, right, into five ways, and then each supervisor works with their constituency to come up with allowable projects under the guidance. So, under District One, which is half of Kingman, the industrial park, what I decided to do is we wrote a scope of work, we issued a competitive request for proposals, we solicited for firms for a minimum of 1G, 100% fiber to the premises broadband, and we received four firms that were interested in a public-private partnership. District One is going to be putting up $4 million of our broadband allocate, or of our ARPA allocation for a match. We had a company called ALO, which they're also building in Lake Havasu City, I'm sure they've already started. ALO was the top-rated proposer in that instance, they're going to be bringing $43 million of capital, private capital investment, so total investment is $47 million of capital investment. They're going to be groundbreaking next month. The project for the Kingman buildout is going to be, you know, the whole, really, the City of Kingman area, both inside the municipal boundaries, outside the municipal boundaries, the industrial park, 100% fiber, and really, no cap on capabilities, up to 100G plus. So, Kingman is going to join Havasu, we're going to have the fastest broadband available in the state of Arizona, and some of the fastest available in the whole Southwest. So, if you're not championing that for economic development, you really need to be, because that's going to make people scratch their head and think, what's going on up in northwest Arizona? Proud about that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
There are no other Board of Supervisors members here or online? Other elected officials in the room? Would anybody like to say anything? We also have people who are running for elected office. If any of you would like to approach the podium, introduce yourself, let us know what you're running for, have a few minutes, we would be happy to hear from you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Brady, and the rest of the Tri-City Council. My name is Adam Morgan, I'm a resident here of Kingman, a former Army officer and West Point graduate, so if you've seen any of the Captain Morgan stuff around, that's me. So, for me, a big part of what I want to talk about is the things that I don't think are getting done with our representation. Travis just talked about a lot of the stuff with water, making sure that the federal government is involved, and making sure that we get more water in to Lake Mead, and through the Colorado River, we can only conserve so much. Beyond that, making sure that people in other parts of the country understand that if we don't get water here, it's going to affect other places in the country, so that's how we gain a consensus and do those type of things. So, I would like everyone to just know that August 2nd is the primary, and if anybody has any questions, they can reach out through our website, Morgan4az, and I just really appreciate the time, and we'll talk to you again soon. Thank you.
Good luck. Donna, welcome.
Donna McCoy, so good to see you all. I'm running for Arizona State House of Representative, Legislative District 30, and as you all know, I served on the City Council for eight years prior. Always loved coming to the Tri-City Councils. I think that it's so great that we all come together to work together, to build and work as a team to do this, and that's what I want to do in Phoenix, is to continue the great work that Regina and Sunny and Leo have done, and work as a team with them, so that our voice here is heard, and that's going to be my primary thing. Of course, water is our number one, and there are many other issues, depending upon where you live, what's going on. So, we want to make sure that we know what's going on with each of you, and you being there for us, so that we can contact and stay in close contact together, so that when we do get up there, we can tell everyone what our district needs. On my way to Colorado City to see our northern neighbors and say hello to them, and I'm just trying to be at as many places, letting all the individuals know that we're here for you, just need to hear from you, and definitely need your vote in August. So, it's good to see you all again. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, then, let's move on to the next item. Arizona Department of Transportation update. Todd, you going to start us off?
Okay, we'll get started with some of the current projects we have going on. We have the State Route Center Raise Medium project, our contractor will be coming back here at the end of this month, beginning of next month, to finish up the micro-surface treatment in the westbound direction, and the final striping and signage. Also, on State Route 68 from the Laughlin Bridge up to milepost 14 in the Golden Valley area, we have a minor surface treatment project, it's going to be a micro-surfacing with some spot melon fill. PAVECO was the contractor on that project, we're just getting ready to kick that off, you'll be seeing that work this summer. Just north of Kingman and the county area on Stockton Hill, there's a safety improvement project, it's going to be centerline rumble strips and edge line rumble strips. It's Nevada Barricade is the contractor on that one, and then, as you're heading to Flagstaff on I-40, up at, we have the Pinaveta Bridge project, the contractor will be coming back next month to finish up the final paving on that project and do some punch list items. And then, on US-93, heading to Phoenix in the northbound direction, we're replacing that bridge at Cabo Wash, that's a, VASCO's the contractor on that one, we're just kicking that project off. And then, here in the City of Kingman, we've got the safety project, our contractor is wrapping that one up. Heading to Flagstaff on I-40, we have the Anvil Rock Road TI, that's a bridge replacement, bridge deck replacement, and we also have in Sligman at the far east end, TI there, we're replacing the bridge decks in both directions there. FNF is the contractor for both of those. Here's just some pictures of the Center Raise Medium and Golden Valley, some of the improvements here, speed feedback limits, and the reflective signal heads for the safety improvements for the city. Here's pictures of Pinaveta, the deck replacement and scour retrofit. Here's what VASCO just started doing on South 93 at Cabo Wash, and FNF getting started up at the East Sligman TI. Okay, some of the upcoming pavement preservation projects and bridge preservation down on SR-95 and Needles. We're looking at doing a deck rehab on the bridge crossing the Colorado River, had to repackage and re-advertise that, that will be advertising this fall. We have the pavement preservation project on I-40 near the California border up to the Lake Havasu TI going to 95, that will be in the fourth quarter of this fiscal year, getting ready to advertise, and then just west of Kingman on I-40, we're going to have in July, that's going to be a pavement preservation, a melon fill project, and then down on SR-95 and Havasu, the state legislative funded project, the melon fill from Sarah Park to And then, we have down on SR-95 from the Bullhead City Parkway to Courtright Road, that's also the state legislative funded project, melon fill, that's going to be in the second quarter of fiscal year '23, the same time as the Lake Havasu pavement melon fill project. And then, here in the City of Kingman on I-40, we're going to be doing a deck replacement in the westbound direction, that's going to be a fiscal year '23, second quarter project. Some of our modernization projects coming up, the county put in for safety funds to put in some street lighting, I mean, I apologize, that's the city, that's their street lighting project on the Parkway and at Silver Creek, that's slated to advertise in the fourth quarter of fiscal year '23. And then, in the county on Boundary Cone Road and Oakman Highway, we've got the edge line and centerline rumble strips, that's a safety funding also, fiscal year '24, still working on the scoping and when that project's going to advertise. Out here on Northern Avenue, the county is looking at doing a complete streets project, which will put in crosswalks, bike lanes, sidewalk, that's a fiscal year '23, second quarter project. Then, we have the traffic calming features and the speed limit feedback signs here in the City of Kingman downtown area, we're wrapping up that design, we're at 95%, and working on the final cost estimate for that project. And then, on US-93 heading to Phoenix from the Santa Maria River, just right before Wickenberg, centerline rumble strip project to improve our safety on that corridor and all the head-on collisions that we have. And then, future expansion projects here for the City of Kingman, we have the system-to-system interchange down at the West Kingman TI, that's slated to advertise this summer and go into construction in the fall of 2023. Down heading to US-93, just north of Wickenberg, we're looking at doing two widening projects, one's called the Gap B, that's state-funded and federal-funded, and then just north of that, from Wickenberg Ranch Road up to State Route 89, we're calling that Gap A, that's developer-funded, that project is going to be widening that segment to divide it four lanes, that's slated to be advertising this late spring, early summer. Then, here in the City of Kingman, we've got the I-40 Ranch of Santa Fe TI, just waiting on finalizing the funding for that one, and then, the design consultant will get us the final bid set and plans to review, and then we'll go to advertisement and construction on that project. Then, we have the Kingman Crossing TI here in the City of Kingman, about a mile and a half east of the Andy Divine TI, we just finalized the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Kingman to start design for that project. Here's just some graphics of what the location and what the Ranch of Santa Fe project's going to look like. The area in orange on the graphic on the left is the area that the ADOT is administering for construction, and then the area in the blue is the portion that the City of Kingman is going to work on internally with their funding and everything to finalize the connection to the airport. The system-to-system interchange, currently, we're on the 60% design for the Phase A construction of that project, that's going to be the Vegas to Phoenix movement, and that's slated to begin construction in late of 2023, all the way through 2025, and then on the slide is the project webpage for the project. And then, here's just a brief graphic of what the Kingman Crossing traffic interchange is going to look like. And then, US-93 from Phoenix to Las Vegas, this is just a graphic of what it looks like. Currently, right now, we're trying to leverage additional funding to see what we can do to finish some of the widening on the corridor from I-40 to Wickenberg. Any questions?
Questions of anyone?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions, Todd, thank you for the report, a lot of information right there. A couple of questions for you on the preservation project from the state line up to the Havasu TI there, is that both east and west lanes will be taken care of?
Yes, that's going to be a melon fill with portions of reconstruct.
Okay, excellent. And then, on the modernization, I didn't see anything about the synchronization of the traffic lights on Highway 95 and partnership with the MPO in Lake Havasu, is that, is that something you're working on?
Yes, we're continuing to work on that, we're slated to try to meet either the end of this month or early next month, so we can set out the scoping and the expectations, whenever the funding becomes available at the beginning of the fiscal year, we can work with the MPO to start working on that project, that's going to be through our encroachment permit process through the district.
Okay, great, thank you.
Todd, I'm curious, on the West Beale interchange here in Kingman?
Yes.
We all know that the traffic congestion there on a weekend is backed up halfway up the hill, so now you're talking about a year and a half, two-year project. Now, I realize most of that will be off-site, but are you anticipating the construction is going to further complicate the traffic movement when you're under construction?
Well, whenever we're under construction for that project, you know, it is anticipated, you're always going to have some congestion and some things, but to minimize the impact, anything that involves mainline I-40 and mainline US-93, that work will occur at night, and then, all the off-site work can occur during any time, so we're doing our best to minimize the impact to the traffic congestion for the region.
Let me ask a simple question, did you ever think about putting something on Highway 68, just saying there's an alternative to go down Aztec and, because any time I come to Kingman on a weekend, I will avoid the interchange, just so that I can, and I take Aztec or, you know, over to, what is it, I can't remember the name of the street, but it's just as easy to go that way if you're coming from the west.
No, understand, and yeah, during construction, we'll have message boards like that, we're also going to use what's called smart traffic zone technology to also warn the traffic of congestion, speed limits, things like that, and on the weekends and stuff, we have been known to utilize our overhead message boards to let people know on North 93 that there is an alternative route on State Route 68 over to Aztec and Shinnu up over to I-40.
All right, and when you mentioned smart technology, I think we probably are all wondering, is it up and running, because we're not seeing any?
No, no, it's not current, it's going to be part of the project during construction for the system-to-system interchange.
No, I'm talking about in Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City, you put the cameras up, but we're not noticing any real changes in traffic movement, so is that system up and running?
Yes, that system in the Bullhead City area is up and running, it is a dynamic system, we've got the radar technology and a coordination plan in place, but there is some additional technology upgrades that have to occur in the Mojave Valley area still that impacts that coordination, and then also, we'll have to keep monitoring those intersections and just keep refining our coordination plan for the corridor.
So, in other words, traffic movement in Bullhead City proper is as good as it's going to get?
Currently, right now, with the traffic volumes that we have, it is a item that we're going to have to deal with, and we're aware of the congestion and the issues, and like I said, we're going to do everything we can, working with our TSMO division to improve it the best we can.
All right, anyone else? All right. Todd, do you want to introduce your new district administrator?
Yes, Anthony Brosnich, our new district administrator's here, I'll let him give a brief introduction to the council.
Anthony, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Sorry to get a chance to talk to you beforehand. New to the post, so Todd was kind enough to do the review for me, but I am looking forward to working with you guys in the future. Started my ADOT career here in Kingman, so I'm familiar with the area, have some ties here, looking forward to see what we can do.
Can you tell us a little bit about your background?
My background, I have a associate degree in mechanical engineering, a degree in civil engineering, I am a registered engineer, I have worked with ADOT for 11 years. Prior to ADOT, I worked as a consultant for geotech firms, and from Pennsylvania originally.
Good. Any questions of Anthony?
Mayor, I just, we were talking to Anthony as we were walking in, I think it'd be good for everybody to understand kind of what he, his location's going to be, so that we all kind of know where we can find him on particular days.
I've heard about this issue. No, currently, I am living in the valley, Phoenix Valley, I still have a daughter going to high school down there, and the state's been nice enough to let me get her through high school one more year, but I do plan to work at the Prescott Valley Office for one week, and then the other week be up here in the Kingman Office, so I will be doing the, putting the windshield time in and splitting time, so I can make sure I have a chance to meet with you guys if need be.
Good, we would like to have our engineer a little closer to the council.
I did, yeah, did hear that.
Yeah, all right.
See what I can do for you.
Mayor, for clarification, so you assumed the position that Alvin Stunt vacated?
Correct, correct.
It used to be called the district engineer, now you're referring to that position or your position as the district administrator?
Correct.
So, maybe just kind of clarify that, so.
District administrator, just with the way ADOT and its staffing has changed over the years, getting short, putting more emphasis on the administrative side of what this position actually has to go through, they actually don't require to be a licensed engineer position, because we have fine folks like Todd backing up that position as well for the engineering aspect, but I do happen to be an engineer, so I will hold on to the title of district administrator, but I can function as a district engineer.
And I hope you'll find some time to visit all of the three cities here and sit down personally with us, so that we can have a more in-depth discussion of what our needs are in our communities.
Yes, we've already discussed this, today's meeting, to start scheduling time to do so.
All right, well, Anthony, welcome to the Tri-City Council meeting, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Arizona Department of Environmental Quality update. Jaime, are you here?
He actually is called out, was unable to attend. We got that notification yesterday, Mayor.
All right. Then let's move on. Legislative update, League of Cities and Towns. I think I saw Renee up there, correct? Renee, are you there? Is there anybody from the league up on Zoom? All right. Well, why don't we move on? And Andy, if you see him?
Please.
Okay.
Renee's back.
Renee, are you there? I am. I'm sorry about that. My computer just crashed and so I am booting back up and I thought the timing couldn't possibly be worse.
Well, welcome. It's nice to see you for a tri-city council meeting. Can you give us an update on what's all going on down at the legislature?
Yes, can do. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayors, for having me and the league today. Tom Belshi would love to be doing this presentation, but I believe he is actually currently in Utah, getting ready to watch his son graduate from BYU. So he's a proud Papa right now, but that means I get the pleasure of presenting to you guys. So the legislative update is that there's not much of an update. For those that track the legislature, the last two weeks have, frankly, I think by all accounts, been slow. The main issue causing that slowdown is the budget. So that's really what I'm going to focus on today. So at the last Finance Advisory Committee, which is a panel of experts that kind of do forecasting for the Joint Legislative Budget Committee, at their last meeting, which I believe was either last week or two weeks ago, they estimated that the state is currently sitting on a $5.3 billion budget surplus. I believe about 4.1 of that is one-time and then 1.2 would be ongoing. And for those, I don't know how much this happens at the local level, but at the legislature, talk to legislators and they will tell you it is always harder when there's money to spend. And I think that's sort of a, kind of a simple conclusion because when you're cutting, you have a known universe, right? You know a number you're trying to get to, you know what you can cut from, there's sort of a guide path there. When you're looking to spend money, then the sky's the limit. And so that's a bit of, I think, the struggle that's going on right now. So we have not seen a lot of movement the last couple of weeks. As many of you know, we send out emails, then we do Monday legislative calls with our mayors, and we have not had those for a few weeks because really there's been no movement on bills of note, you know, that are worthy of providing an update. And again, I think part of that slowdown isn't necessarily, you know, the legislature can walk and chew gum. So it's easy to say, well, why can't the legislature just do the other non-budgetary bills while budget discussions, you know, continue behind the scenes? I think the issue there is that the legislature, for lack of a better term, has sort of wised up over the last few years and last couple of administrations where frankly, under both, we saw bill moratoriums be imposed by the governors as a means of forcing, quote unquote, the legislature to focus on the budget. And in a couple of instances, those moratoriums were imposed without prior notice to the legislature. And so the legislature had sent bills to the governor's office not knowing that the governor was going to do this. And so those kind of became, for lack of a better term, innocent victims of this, you know, budget fight negotiation. So I think because of that, you see the legislature being far more hesitant to, you know, pardon the sort of crassness, but, you know, they don't want to give hostages, they don't want to send hostages over for the governor's office to use as leverage on budget negotiations. So that is why I believe that legislative activity has generally slowed down. So why is, why is nothing happening on the budget? So there's a few, you know, few items driving that issue. You know, probably first and foremost was the tax cut package that was passed last year. So this is the 2.5 or the plan to phase in ultimately to a 2.5% flat rate on income tax. That was passed last year in last year's budget, but people were successful in getting signatures to refer that to the ballot, right? So it's fate, if you will, is sort of in limbo pending, you know, the will of the voters in November. So that has driven a conversation on, well, what do we do about that? And so a technique that has been used in the past is what we call repeal and replace. So, you know, the legislature has the ability to repeal the law that they passed last year for that tax cut. They could then pass a new bill with the exact same language. And when you refer, when the people refer an act of the legislature to the ballot, they refer the specific bill. They don't refer the concept, right? So if the legislature repeals last year's bill and then just imposes the new language on a new bill, that isn't being referred. So they call that repeal and replace and then it doesn't have to go to the ballot. So that is a concept that, again, the supporters of last year's budget are supportive of so that the tax cut proposal is not in limbo. However, now that all projections show that the state is actually collecting more money than it planned, there's now a growing sentiment for what is, people are calling the repeal and accelerate. So instead of doing a phased-in drop down to a 2.5% flat rate for income tax, what they want to do is just immediately go to the 2.5% flat tax for Arizona. And because they actually now know they have the money, so to speak, in the bank to afford that tax cut. And given the realities of the election cycle, there is not enough time. I actually, I think at this point, actually might be impossible for people to gather signatures and be able to refer that to the ballot, or maybe, you know, technically impossible. On that note, you may recall that as part of that negotiation, because cities and towns receive 15% of all income tax collections under our state shared revenue system, that would have represented a significant impact to local revenues. And so we were able to negotiate that the legislature would increase that percentage from 15% to 18% to serve as an offset. We have been told behind the scenes by people, frankly, high up in the legislature, I mean, being frank, they don't want the fight we had last year. And they would rather avoid some of those potential pitfalls, especially if they feel like they'd end up in the same spot. So they recognize and have acknowledged that if the repeal and accelerate plan were to be put into action, the increase from 15% to 18% for cities and towns on income tax would also have to be accelerated. And they've acknowledged that and they've planned for that. So what that would most likely mean is that if we see a budget with that proposal in it, that we would have essentially a slight lead on when we go to 18% versus when income tax goes down to 2.5%. And that bump, as I call it, is intentional because, you know, the analysis we had done by Jim Rounds Consulting last year showed, again, ultimately it's not a true whole harmless. So that bump in the initial formula change, we would advise cities and towns to kind of hold into and use that to transition to that lower, as we transition to that lower 2.5% income tax, we're going to see a drop in local revenues. So that can help you sort of transition to that lower revenue collection. So we feel pretty confident about where the budget would be as it relates to us. So, you know, we're happy to be out of the budget fight and hope to remain out of the budget fight this year. But then again, those are the kind of the, the issues that we look at, you know, in the budget. Some of the other items that have slowed down the budget. So first was repeal, the whole repeal and replace slash repeal and accelerate. The second was there was an issue regarding precinct committeemen, and I'm not going to go into the details of it, except to say, a number of legislators weren't aware of what was it, an emergency measure that they passed and how it was going to impact precinct committeemen. And so there was a time where there was a thought of doing perhaps either some sort of negotiation with the Democrats to give them some budget priorities in exchange for them going along with an emergency fix to the bill that was just passed. However, there was a lawsuit regarding those changes and a judge, I believe in Yavapai County threw out the law and the state is not appealing. And so that has sort of cleared the path to say, okay, well, that issue is no longer an issue, which then now means, okay, the legislature or the Republican leadership doesn't necessarily have to negotiate with Democrats on this particular issue. That also means the legislature was previously looking at doing a budget in a special session because a special session has an earlier effective date than the regular session. Those issues are now off the table for the budget because that issue has essentially resolved itself. That was number two. Number three and four, all mentioned in the same breath, which is there is still a bit of a sentiment of wanting to push for election reform and election changes to be sort of resolved and concluded before the legislature focuses on the budget. I will tell you that that sentiment has largely died down, so I don't know if there's other plans that have been made on that front, or if it's just those senators in particular that were raising that alarm have been comfortable with the movement of election bills during the regular session. And then item four is water. And you heard the supervisor, you know, talking about the proposal. So just in general, the governor wants to form the Arizona Water Authority. I believe the plan would be to give them a billion dollars over three years to facilitate their role in financing the acquisition of water and water infrastructure. That's about as deep as I'm going to go because as you guys know, the league does not do water because that can be such a local and regional issue. I think the supervisor actually put it very, very well in highlighting the differences in, say, water policy from, say, Queen Creek to the tri-city council. But the water issue is a major issue for the governor. However, I again would concur with the supervisor's assessment that it has, let's say, run into challenges. How about that to be, to be polite? And so that deal is, I think, far from done. And so the question is both, one, again, we keep talking about leverage, right? Well, this is clearly a want from the governor. And so that is a leverage point, but also a major budget point because you're looking at at least $300 million this year to fund that, $1 billion total. So not only is it a major policy issue for the governor, it's a major budget point for the governor. So those are kind of all the pieces that are floating out there regarding the budget. And then the last piece that I wanted to mention that has been covered, I think, pretty thoroughly in the media, or at least, you know, the political media, the chattering class, if you will. So a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago now, in the Arizona Republic, conservative columnist Bob Robb had a, had an article or an op-ed where he was talking about the grand bargain for Arizona where after, after the Supreme Court, essentially, or actually really, I guess, Superior Court throughout Prop 208 for education, he was proposing sort of a grand bargain of, okay, it's clear that the Arizona voters are willing to put something on the ballot for additional education funding, but these legal challenges keep taking it off the ballot. That, that cycle could only happen so many times. So what he was proposing was, given that there are these excess monies and significant portion are ongoing, that the legislature consider doing either a reduced or modified income tax cut and then taking some of that ongoing revenue surplus and then proactively dedicating that for K-12 funding to sort of close the door, if you will, on future ballot measures regarding K-12 funding to still give a major income tax cut to, you know, all Arizona residents. And again, call that the grand bargain because if you structure it right, you have, you know, appeal to the right with the income tax cuts and you have appeal to the left with increased K-12 funding. So could that be a grand bargain to get a budget out and do it efficiently? Well, at least one senator seems to have that same thought, Senator Paul Boyer. And so there are rumors that he's been negotiating with some entities at the legislature for something along those lines. It would also include a major expansion for empowerment scholarship accounts, which is essentially Arizona School Voucher Program. What's interesting is that there are mixed reports as to who he may be having conversations with, seemingly indicating that in particular, the Senate president may not be involved in those conversations. So that is certainly a problem. At the same time, this has also created an opportunity, in particular for Senator Bowie, who is known as probably the most moderate Democrat senator, to have an opportunity to have a lot of attention turned on to him. I think the supervisor also mentioned this, you know, these are the closest margins we've had in the legislature. It's 31 Republicans in the House, 16 Republicans in the Senate. So any one, you know, I think Speaker Bowers put it, he's got 30 kings he has to deal with because on any one issue, if he loses one Republican, they hold the power. And that creates a window for potentially for Democrats. And so as the most moderate Democrat, he's seen as the most gettable potentially. And so you have this now rising conversation, mostly again amongst the pontificators to say, well, what's the cheaper price tag? Getting Senator Boyer or getting Senator Bowie? And what, and what does that price tag look like? So in case you couldn't tell from all of that, I think we are unfortunately still a far time away from a real solid budget proposal, you know, coming to the public. So you hear all that from me and then you say, but Renee, isn't there an appropriations hearing today? And that's where I say there is. So on Monday, the House Rules Committee allowed for the late introduction of budget bills, which had all of us chattering and scrambling. What was introduced is what is being called in the capital community, the skinny budget. It is essentially the JLBC baseline budget, which means the FY '22 budget with the required increases for formula funding programs in the state. And so I believe with that, JLBC counts it as having a $3 billion cash balance if they were to enact the skinny budget. So this is sort of your bare bones budget. And so this has been an item of conversation for a few weeks as well with the idea of, let's do the skinny budget because at least then we know we've continued the state operations. If July 1st passes and we don't have a true budget, that's okay. We've taken steps to ensure the continued operation of our state. And so that also means we're now free to finish up all the other policy bills for the legislative session and then we can either recess while we negotiate the budget or we signee die and the governor can call us back into special session for the budget. It gives us a lot of options. That is the thinking behind the skinny budget. However, it does not appear that the votes are there for these skinny budgets. So the bills were introduced, they are going through the appropriations committee today right now, and we will see how they go, how they pass. I mean, there are, they were introduced in the House only, there is optimism, there is pessimism, I should say, that they will pass the floor. And if anything, this is more of a, you know, a straw man, I think, to really see where, in particular, where Republicans are on the budget and what approach they want to take. You know, expected to be, you know, drawn out. And, and again, it might be good by putting this out publicly because it may get a better sense of where certain representatives or senators are on the budget. But I would not, if you, if you look at the budget that was introduced in the House and you're worried because something you want to see in there is not in there, I would say, do not worry because this, again, is really meant to represent a skinny budget. So, for example, I know there are, the legislature, you know, the last few years with our budget surpluses, has enjoyed funding one-time infrastructure projects with one-time funds. And there's a number of projects, I think, that want to be on that list and are on that list. To me, those are not in jeopardy at this point because, because again, this is the skinny budget. This is, you know, those ongoing state governmental obligations and operations. So, Mayor, that was a lot to talk about, a lot of nothing in a, in a frank manner. And so as a result, we really don't have any updates on other, you know, bills moving at the legislature. Really, the focus is right now on the budget and who those key players are going to be. So that's what I wanted to focus the update on. And I think just the last thing I'll mention is on the federal front, necessarily a legislative update, but I just want to remind everybody, and maybe this is mostly a message for the clerks and for the managers, but there is a lot of money that is going to be coming down and it's starting to be coming down, starting to come down from the federal government, from the infrastructure bill and. starting to come down from the federal government, from the infrastructure bill in particular. And so I've sent out some information to the managers previously, but you know, one of the big ones is what they're calling the mega NOFO. So the USDOT has three grant programs, but it's one application to apply for all three grant opportunities. So it's a, that's why it's the mega notice of funding opportunity. So there's some real big dollars, you know, available to be to be pulled down. I will acknowledge and we have communicated through our channels that these funding opportunities are great. However, many of these grant opportunities require local matching funds. And right now you cannot use your ARPA dollars to serve as those local matching funds. And so I know I've talked to some communities who say, Renee, it's great. I'd love to apply for the grant. I have $0 for this project. So how do you expect me to get the 20% match to pull down the 80% from the feds? So I recognize that that's an issue. There is the Flex Act that has been introduced in Congress to try to give local governments that ability to use your ARPA allocation as your federal match. But that isn't moving at the moment. But again, if anyone has any questions or any cities are interested in learning more about some of those opportunities, certainly can email me and we can talk. And I've probably gone entirely too long and you've been gracious with your time. So with that, mayors, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Renee. And that was not entirely too long. It was very informative. So we thank you for that update. Now, do any members of the Tri-City Council have questions of Renee?
Yeah, Mayor Brady. Renee, you had mentioned early in your presentation about the budget surplus. It was five billion or so and then 1.2 an ongoing. Can you just verify those numbers for me?
Yep, no, you got you got it. Now, what's interesting is the accounting will vary. So so the numbers I shared from the Finance Advisory Committee was 5.3 billion, 1.2 of which was ongoing. And so one of the things I talk, I mean, when I say the differences in numbers, so that's the Finance Advisory Committee. Then you have the Joint Legislative Budget Committee, which does, which takes information from the FAC, but then does some of their own calculations. And so, for example, I believe if you if you, you know, heard me talk about the skinny budget with just a $3 billion cash balance, I believe the they, the skinny budget doesn't increase state spending by 2.3 billion dollars. Right? So the discrepancy is, I think, that JLBC doesn't necessarily account for, say, the ARPA dollars that the state receive. Whereas the FAC is looking at all discretionary funding. And then you may even see different numbers from the governor's office because they have OSPB, which is their budgetary arm and does their own completely unique calculations on revenue. But yes, Mayor, the numbers I cited was 5.3 total, 1.2 ongoing.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, you're correct. I've heard that three different ways. So I appreciate the explanation.
Anyone else? Renee, what's what's your prediction on how long the legislature is going to go this year?
Oh, that's a good question. Um. I think we are going, I think we're going into June. I think mid-June. I think mid-June is when I would expect session to end. I just think historically, we've got a lot of fine rural folks at the legislature who don't realize how hot it gets in Phoenix in June. And that seems to put a lot of pressure. And then also it's an election year and you have a lot of folks that are termed out and running for other offices. And they're going to want to go get out there and hit the campaign trail. I know that's not great, you know, sooner typically, the sooner the better, especially for us when it comes to, you know, local government budgeting. But that's just where I feel like we're at.
All right. Anyone else? Renee, thank you for the update and God bless and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you much. Thank you, mayors.
All right, let's move on. Kevin, Rural Transportation Update. I saw you there earlier. Are you still there?
I am there. We're here.
You're always there. It's always nice to see you and to hear from you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate talking with everyone. It yeah, I think much of what's occurring with the budget Renee went over and we are in a period of limbo. I do think that what we are attempting to see with the skinny budget proposal is to get some movement among the among the rank and file members. You know, as was discussed earlier, you know, right now, the partisan margins at the legislature couldn't be closer, 31 to 29 and 16 to 14. And as was alluded to, basically, if they attempt to move legislation just through the Majority Caucus, which is typically the case, especially with budget bills, they don't have a single vote to spare. Virtually, as Renee indicated, you know, Speaker Bowers has talked about dealing with, everyone is a king. You know, another way to look at it is that every single Republican member of the House and the Senate essentially has veto authority. If they lose one vote, they are not able to pass a budget on partisan grounds. And so for that reason, you know, in this very close split, it was there last year. And I think some members have become adept at being able to use that power as leverage. And of course, if you have too many of them doing that, you're never going to come to an agreement. And so I believe this push for a skinny budget is to push for activity. But at the same time, I think it also gives leadership a little bit of leverage in that, okay, if we pass this budget and we just basically limit it to ongoing spending, spending with the required adjustments for formula, basically you get nothing. If there was something with the with the surplus revenues that you were holding out for and pushing to get included in the budget, you're not going to get any of it if you hold out and don't try to reach some sort of compromise within the caucus. And and so it remains to be seen how effective that will be. You know, the governor has already come out and said that he's going to be opposed to a skinny budget if it doesn't address his priorities. And if you look at how and they're written true to word, basically it's bare bones. There's no additional spending outside of the increases for the the ongoing programs. And so and of course, for us with transportation, we knew very early on that it was going to be the budget that was key. We weren't going to see any permanent increases in the revenue streams that that feed into paying for infrastructure. And yet we also knew it was highly likely that if there was going to be a balance or a revenue surplus, that there was a very good chance that there'd be a substantial portion directed to the infrastructure. So that's where we are. And and of course, a skinny budget would not include those projects. As Renee indicated, there's 2.8 billion that is considered one-time funding that they'll have to work with. Now, a lot of the the folks pushing the skinny budget are saying, we'll get this enacted, doesn't mean we're going to adjourn. We can go back and try to address other priorities afterwards. Of course, you don't have nearly as much leverage if those other priorities aren't tacked on to the budget. So that all remains to be seen how this is going to play out. But but I do think that with the the surplus at the level that it is, we have tremendous opportunity to still see much of that directed to greater Arizona infrastructure. And I know we've talked in the past, you know, our tack through the COGS and MPOs, we did develop a list of priority projects from across greater Arizona. Those were predominantly local projects. I know for for your region, we had pavement rehab projects in in all three of the cities, plus two county roads were going to be funded in that. House Appropriations Chair Cobb indicated she didn't want to see local projects in the state budget. So we went back and developed an alternative list of state highway projects from across the state. That list does include what we hope would complete the improvements needed within the city boundaries of Lake Havasu and Bullhead City on SR 95. So we now have these two lists that have moved forward. The the House and Chair Cobb are favoring or more oriented towards that list of state projects. Yet back in the Senate, President Fan has indicated that she doesn't like that direction, that she liked our original list of projects that were predominantly local. So as leadership continues to meet and tries to hammer out an agreement on on a broader budget, I think it's real positive that both sides include us. They want to fund greater Arizona transportation projects. Yet they still have to work out the disagreement on whether local projects would be included in that or not. So I think it's very favorable that we continue to be in the mix. We've got an historical level of revenue to work with. So this is almost, you could almost say it's a it's a once in a lifetime opportunity. I think it's good. One of the positives of having both lists out there is that we've demonstrated the need and the demand for projects to be included in the budget, which I think will help, you know, maximize the level that is directed to infrastructure. So we are anxiously awaiting to see what the final outcome is going to be. We're continuing to work with legislators to make sure it continues to be a priority. And certainly we could use your help there to, you know, every time you're talking with the delegation, please emphasize the importance of of transportation in this budget. You know, we did receive a tremendous amount of new funding opportunities at the federal level. But it doesn't even come remotely close to meeting all of the the needs. We've had decades of underinvestment. Also, the federal legislation tends to be more oriented towards the state highway systems. So it doesn't quite benefit locals to the same degree. There are a lot of new competitive grant opportunities that are out there. And the one thing that I'll close on is that, you know, I mentioned that the the governor's priorities aren't in the skinny budget. The governor also had a 50 million program in his budget proposal that would be administered by ADOT that he was going to call the Smart Fund. And it's exclusive to greater Arizona. And what it would do is provide funding assistance for federal grant application preparation, satisfy local match requirements. And so I think that'll go a long ways towards maximizing the level of federal funding that gets directed to greater Arizona. So that that's another proposal that we hope makes it into the final budget. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kevin. Does anybody have any questions of Kevin?
Kevin, hi, Toby Cotter. Thanks for all your help this year. One quick question, just thinking ahead with all the projects and all of the projects you heard ADOT talk about here locally and all of them that you know statewide. We asked if this year specifically, if we could administer the Highway 95 project, the state engineer said no. Is there any legislative play that we can have cities who can show, you know, specifically that we've hired the professional staff or contracted executive consultants or other folks where we can somehow get the administration of these projects? My fear is just thinking, not this year, long term. There's no way they have the wherewithal to get these projects done. That's why you're seeing these things pushed out five years or more. And our local projects, we need to get these things done. We get projects done. I'm sorry, ADOT founders, and there's so much on their plate right now. My concern moving forward is getting things done, there should be a local angle where we can help the state. And we offered that this year with the Highway 95 project and we were rejected. Any thoughts on any of that moving forward?
Toby, and I also think that with the the increase in federal funding, you know, ADOT's plate's going to be that much fuller. So I don't think there's any question that they're going to, their resources are going to be strained in a positive way. You know, we've got hopefully a lot more activity out there, you know, improving the highways and streets. So I think efforts to try to provide more local authority. Yeah, there's a lot of merit to them. And I think we've you know, tried to pursue different avenues. I would say particularly with 95, I think the one obstacle that's always going to be there is that if the highway is, if it's going to continue to be a state highway, ADOT is going to continue to have the long-term responsibility of operation, maintenance liability for it. And so unless a a local jurisdiction is willing to take over the road or the highway, I think it's be very difficult for ADOT to sort of relinquish that that type of control over the improvement. So that is a challenge. But yeah, I think we do need to try to increase as much local authority as we can.
Thank you for that, Kevin. Anyone else have questions of Kevin? Kevin, thank you much. We always appreciate your updates at our Tri-City Council meetings and have a great day.
You're very welcome.
All right. Last item on our agenda is our mayor's reports on city updates. Who wants to start? Why don't we start with Cal?
All right. Thank you. A few things that are happening in Lake Havasu City is our city council I met regarding some of the initial conversations on ARPA dollars. And we focused mostly on community resources and what that might look like. And the council has given direction to city staff to come back with a resolution, which will be coming back to our council meeting next Tuesday, creating the Community Resource Coalition, which will allocate about a million dollars of the ARPA funds over a two-year period to the areas of social service needs. So housing, senior adult care, childcare, food, sheltering, developmental services that are needed in our community through an application process. The resolution if passed by council next week will create a five-member board appointed by the council with two alternate members to hear applications from different organizations within our community to make a final recommendation to council for funding with those allocated resources. We also do have an ad hoc group that we've brought together, that we come together twice a year on the community resources. And the intent of that was just to bring all of the different social services, transportation, economic development, and nonprofit organizations and faith-based together just to have conversation. We happen to have another one of those meetings tomorrow where we'll also address that coalition with what the direction of the council is. So stay tuned for more based on our vote on Tuesday. We also have our CIP budget work session tomorrow. This is the first of our public work sessions going through our budget process. We've already had our annual planning meeting where we've given initial direction to staff, but now we'll hear the first component with the CIP. ALO Communications, as Supervisor Lingefelder mentioned, they had announced Lake Havasu City as the first community in Arizona with a $50 million private investment. They have just overcome one of the largest hurdles and that was with the Arizona Corporation Commission. Shockingly, of the three services they're offering, being broadband, telephone and television services, the only one really that's regulated is telephone services, the least used by most residential customers. But they were able to get on the docket and had a hearing and that's passed. So all obstacles have been removed from them and they're able to move forward with the full development of that broadband. And as Supervisor Lingefelder mentioned, we will have the fastest internet speeds in Arizona up in this region. But we're really excited to have ALO come to our community and we're looking to do a special coffee with the mayor and city manager in the next several weeks to kind of announce and answer all broadband related questions for our citizens, what that means, what that looks like. And then from the city's perspective, what it means to have options for citizens and infrastructure from that perspective. Last week, the Havasu Riviera, which is a new development in Lake Havasu City on the water, includes housing development, but also a new concessionaire of a state park with a mainland boat launch facility. includes housing development, but also a new concessionaire of a state park with a mainland boat launch facility, held the Chamber of Commerce Chamber mixer. And they are hopeful to open up that marina and launch ramp by mid-May sometime to hit the, the boating season, which is a really exciting time in Lake Havasu City, a long time coming for this project, but things are, are moving in the right direction. And then finally, if you don't have anything to do this weekend, Desert Storm is our largest boat regatta and boat event in Lake Havasu City. Tomorrow on McCollack between Smoke Tree and Akoma, we'll have a boat show along that main street area. And then throughout the weekend, we'll have all of the Desert Storm events. And we're excited to welcome Desert Storm back to Lake Havasu City. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Cal. Can you have a smile on your face? Are you going to give the report or is Jen?
I can. If, if that, yeah, that would be great. I'd be glad to. Obviously, things are moving along in Kingman. We have a transportation under, a transportation study underway to obviously help residents and commerce around our city. And so that study is expected in fourth quarter. That's being done by Kim Lee Horn. And we actually just had a report on it last night at our city council. Our industrial park is continuing to grow. As most of you might know, we have a FedEx facility being constructed out there, over a 200,000 square foot facility that is being built for, to facilitate distribution. And so that's, you know, our industrial park is healthy and we're, we're blessed that we have that in our city. Todd gave a, gave a great report from ADOT about our interchanges that are progressing. And all three are in different stages of progressing. I think all of us, from what we just heard as far as ADOT, we'd like to see all these things, these things happening faster in our cities. If there are ways, certain ways to help those progress faster, it'd be great to know how to do that. But we are sort of at their mercy, but we're glad that those things are progressing. Then probably finally, as Supervisor Lingonfeldler mentioned, ALO is also breaking ground here in Kingman. And we have a groundbreaking ceremony on May 3rd that everyone is invited to. And that will be happening over at our Powerhouse Visitor Center. And that will be happening at 10 o'clock in the morning at the Route 66 Arch that we have there. So exciting times happening in Kingman.
Thank you, Ken. In Bullhead City, you all know that we now are the owners and operators of our water system. That deal is now complete. It cost the city basically $100 million through a stipulated plea agreement and, or a negotiated agreement. And we are now the proud owners of a system that we're getting to know better on a daily basis and having second, I shouldn't say having second thoughts. We now realize the pig in the poke that we bought. So I don't know how Epcor thought that they were going to manage the system with all of the problems that we're seeing and the limited funds that they were throwing in the system every year. But we're very proud in the fact that we are now the owners of the system, especially at this time when there is so much federal money available and ARPA money available so we can upgrade the system without going back to our rate payers like Epcor would do. And they're not even eligible for any of it. But we believe that it was just a very opportune time for this, the takeover to happen. And we're, we're looking forward for a brighter future as far as our water system in Bullhead City goes. Election is coming up. We now have, we could have an entirely new city council in the coming months. We have three people vying for the mayor's seat. I'm not running. We have two seats available for a four-year term, two seats for a four-year term. And we have four people running for that, including one current city council member and one former city council member. And we have three seats available for a two-year term. As most of you know, in the past couple of years, we've basically lost four city council people for whatever reason. And we're going to have three two-year seats available. So it could be a very interesting election year for Bullhead City. Last night, the city council was offered the donation of the Celebration Tour Boat that sits in front of the Aquarius Hotel and Casino. And they're expecting they're going to get a new yacht, much bigger, much more elaborate, much more contemporary. And that's expected to be delivered in June. So they're going to be disposing of the Celebration and they offered it to the city. And it was at last night's city council meeting, meeting that we accepted that donation. And it is our hope that we will dry dock it along the river, but not in the river. So it never sees, it will never float again. But we expect that it will be a wonderful addition to our Bullhead Community Park where, where we are doing so many new and important things. To include, we just approved a splash park at the north end of the community park. That should start construction here very shortly. And our commercial boat launch to try and relieve the congestion and conflict that we have with our personal watercraft users and our commercial watercraft users. On our existing ramp, we are spending over a million dollars to provide a new commercial launch ramp for just the jet ski rental businesses. And that's expected to be completed by the end of next month. So we're looking for great things happening in Bullhead City. And those are some of the major things that are happening. Toby, have I missed anything important?
No, just one thing to add. I mean, we're anticipating a very busy summer. It was said earlier, you know, Lake Mead is not accessible, right? So for Bullhead and Havasu, that means probably the largest summer we've seen in a long, long time. We're already seeing that uptick in traffic. And so Lake Powell is, is, you know, drying up too. So like Mead is drying up, Lake Mojave is not and won't be anytime soon and neither will Lake Havasu. So the power is being generated by Davis Dam. Now, so some of that is shifting from Glen Canyon to Davis and then down to Parker. That means we'll have water, at least for the foreseeable future. And so great for us, great for our economy, great for Havasu's economy. But we need to make sure we're all ready for what will be a very busy summer. And I appreciate the county providing some additional services. The council is trying to do everything we can and they adopted a wristband requirement last night for people renting in the city. We've got a little issue between our jurisdiction with Nevada, but essentially we require a consumer protection form to be watched by everyone who's renting. And then if you verify and validate that you, you watch the safety video, you sign the form and now council is requiring a wristband be affixed to their wrist that shows that they in fact watch the safety video. It's a growing concern for us. We are the lead agency on the river. And certainly we're going to keep advocating for state of Nevada to help a little bit more than they are. But just food for thought, it's going to be a busy summer.
All right. With that being said, that concludes our agenda for today's Tri-City Council meeting. So this meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a pleasant day and let's eat.
We have barbecue from Hooch's. We are excited about pulled pork, pulled chicken, mac and cheese. It should be really good, so please help yourselves.